Durham County Board of Commissioners met in closed session, no action was taken. We will now begin our regular session with the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow citizens. At any time should any member of the Board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. I will now ask Commissioner Burton, would you like to read the land acknowledgement?
Thank you Chair Alom. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit the land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you Commissioner Burton. I will ask Commissioner Valentine to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Commissioner Valentine, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing that, I think there is one that I was supposed to message the clerk about, but I forgot. For the appointments of our Boards and Commissions for the Commissioners, to just have that in the language at their effect of January first. That's the only adjustment I had. Any others? Okay. Then... We will move to announcements from Clerk Wallace.
Good evening, I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. Most Durham County government offices will be closed in observance of the winter holiday from Tuesday, December twenty-fourth through Thursday, December twenty-sixth. Offices will reopen with the normal business hours on Friday, December twenty-seventh. Our offices will also close for New Year's Day on Wednesday, January first, 2025, and reopen on Thursday, January second. Read how it will impact services at dconc.gov. Open enrollment for Bulls, I'm sorry, open enrollment for Bulls Academy is now open. However, you must first attend an info session. Session dates are December eleventh at twelve noon, January fifteenth at twelve noon, and February fifth at twelve noon. You can visit maidindurham.org to receive additional information and to register. The Durham County Library is excited to host the grand reopening of the Stanford L Warren Branch Library on Thursday, December twelfth at ten AM. The branch located at twelve oh one Fayetteville Street closed for extensive renovations, structural repairs, and updates for three years. The branch's history began with the funding of the Durham Colored Library in nineteen sixteen as only the second black library in North Carolina. You can read more information at nccdigital.durhamcountylibrary.org. All aboard and welcome to the train show. This exhibit is brought on, is brought to us by Little World Charity. Watch as ten model trains travel through the State Fair, Wintertown, Spooky Town, and more. The purpose of this is one hundred percent volunteer effort, is to encourage literacy and bring joy to kids needing medical care. It's held December thirteenth through sixteenth, seventeenth, nineteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, and the twen- I'm sorry, twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth. It's from ten AM to four PM at the Durham County Library located at three hundred North Roxboro Street. And you can visit the Durham County Library website for additional information. Durham County Memorial Stadium located at seven fifty Stadium Drive will host the sixty-ninth Annual NAIA Football Championship Game at twelve noon on Sunday, December twenty-first. The game will pit the top two teams that advance through the NAIA Football Championship Series, which runs from November twenty-third through December fourteenth. There is a link to purchase tickets. The Durham County Tax Administration mailed twenty twenty-four tax bills to Durham County property owners in mid-August. Taxes are due September first, twenty twenty-four, but must be paid by January sixth, twenty twenty-five to avoid interest and additional costs. For information, you can visit dconc.gov backslash tax, or you can contact their office at nine one nine five six zero zero three zero zero. The Durham County Tax Administration wants to inform everyone that notices for the twenty twenty-five reappraisal will be mailed to all real property owners during the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. These will inform taxpayers of their twenty twenty-five assessed values. Property owners are encouraged to review the values, compare them with sales they have observed in their markets, and verify that their property listing is accurate. For questions, you can call nine one nine five six zero zero three zero zero. Durham County Department of Public Health and the DECO Firearm Injury Prevention Partnership invites all community members to come to the Human Services Building located at four fourteen East Main Street during the month of December to view the Durham homicide and victim of violent death memorial quilt exhibit. Artist Sidney Brody created the quilt in the mid nineteen hundreds. The event is free and open to the public during normal hours. You can visit sidneybrody.net for additional information regarding the memorial quilt. Be sure to check out the latest edition of In Touch with Durham County from the DECO Public Information Office. The latest episode features Durham County Tax Administrator Kiardol. He will discuss the upcoming twenty twenty-five general reappraisal and what taxpayers need to know. The episode will run on, I'm sorry, on Durham Television Network, and you can also watch it on the county's YouTube channel. And lastly, if you have any ideas on how to make biking, walking, and ro- running in Durham better. Residents are now invited to provide their input to help update the twenty twenty-five Durham Bike Plus Walk Plan, a guide for improving sidewalks, bike lanes, greenways, and other infrastructure. Residents can participate by completing an online survey or attending an in-person community meeting or pop-up events. These meetings are scheduled as follows. Community meetings are scheduled December eighth from two to three thirty PM, located at Free People's Bike Ride, December fourteenth from ten to twelve noon at WG Pearson Center, and Thursday, January sixteenth from six to seven thirty PM, located at Aville Retreat Center. The pop-up events will be Saturday, December seventh from nine to ten thirty at Leap Five K Jingle Walk Run, and Saturday, December twenty-first from ten to twelve noon at the PAC One Meeting located at the Holton Career Resource Center. For additional information, you can visit engagedurham.com. And that concludes the announcements in tonight's agenda.
Thank you Clerk Wallace, and I apologize, I jumped, begun, and put, can we entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Byrne, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. We will now move to citizen comments. We have one individual signed up. Minister Rafiq Sadi, if you want to come over to this podium over here, and you'll have three minutes, please introduce yourself and share the organization you represent and your address. And the agenda item that he is speaking on is twenty-four dash zero seven one three.
Good evening, Deals, Commissioners. I'm just here for a moment to express my concern for the approval, which usually, I usually do this, approve anything the city or county do, but I really think the structure, facility, structure of security at the detention center is much needed at this time. It's critical, it's expedient for the approval of any equipment or facility, security, infrastructure, upgrade, devices in light of the criminal activities. In light of those activities down at the county jail that the residents in Durham were really not pleased with. Anytime a known drug blood dealer can run a drug operation from inside of a jail, we need all the security devices that we can get. Anytime workers or staff workers or contractors can be impregnated by inmates from inside of the jail, we need all the security that we can get. So I stress that you approve this, and I pray to Almighty God that we can correct the criminal activities that's been going on in the detention center. Thank you.
Thank you Mister Rafiq Sadi for your comments. That is the only individuals we see signed up. I will now move us to the ceremonial items, and Vice Chair Dr. Lee will be reading the resolution for us today.
Okay, so our resolution is observing January first, twenty twenty-five as Emancipation Day. Whereas on January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, a landmark executive order that declared freedom for enslaved American Negroes in Confederate states, symbolizing a profound commitment to the values of liberty and justice for all. And whereas emancipation day was first celebrated in North Carolina on January first, eighteen sixty-five, in Union occupied New Bern, with a procession through the city, a public reading of the Emancipation Proclamation, and speeches by freedmen leaders, freedmen leaders, marked the start of an enduring tradition of commemorization of the celebration, commemorization and celebration. And whereas early Emancipation Day celebrations, while initially coordinated by Union forces, quickly became a vital, quickly became vital expressions of autonomy and community empowerment led by these new freedman Americans who emphasized prosperity through fragility, temperance, industry, and education as guiding principles for their future. And whereas by the late nineteenth century, Emancipation Day observances had gained widespread respect and participation across the racial and political lines in North Carolina, serving as a powerful platform for civic engagement and reflection, and drawing notable speakers, including state officials and prominent figures such as former Congressman H.P. Keitham. And whereas the recognition of Emancipation Day in Durham County honors the legacy of resilience and resistance exemplified by Black Americans throughout our history, especially in the face of systematic injustice, and acknowledges the county's role in fostering a vibrant freedman community and economy, including the historic contributions of Black Wall, Black Wall Street. And whereas it is crucial that we never forget the profound impact of slavery and its lasting legacy on our society, and that we continue to educate future generations about this history and the ongoing struggle for racial equality, racial equity, justice, and civil rights in our community and beyond. And whereas the observance of Emancipation Day aligns with Durham County's commitment to promoting equity, inclusivity, and community development, reflecting our values of honoring the past to build more just and equitable future for Black American families descended from those formerly enslaved in North Carolina. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to designate January first, twenty twenty-five as Emancipation Day in Durham County, and encourage all residents, businesses, community organizations, and educational institutions to join in recognizing this important day through acts of reflection, public celebrations, educational activities, and community service. And be it further resolved that this observance serves as a reaffirm, reaffirmation that Durham County's dedication to advancing racial justice and economic equity, and has a reminder of their enduring importance of emancipation as a cornerstone of American democracy and freedom. This the ninth day of December, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you Dr. Lee, and I believe we have Dawn Page, the founder of Concerned Black American Citizens Organization?
Good evening, thank you. I'm Dawn Page with Concerned Black American Citizens. We are a five oh one C three. We are a five oh one C three, founded in twenty nineteen. Um, we are a nonpartisan organization advocating for a focus agenda of restorative policies to repair and rebuild the Black American family after decades of targeted wealth destruction. Our mission as an organization is to educate citizens about the lineage wealth gap and mobilize them around issues that directly affect the lives of those disadvantaged Black American descendants, um, issues such as economic development and climate and economic justice. And so tonight, I would like to, um, give my thanks on behalf of Concerned Black American Citizens. Um, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the Durham County Council for accepting our proposed resolution to recognize January first, twenty twenty-five as Emancipation Day. This historic recognition honors the enduring legacy of freedom and resilience in our community, and we are deeply moved by your commitment to elevating its significance. We also wish to acknowledge the invaluable support and collaboration of key community stakeholders, Ambassador Cathedral Church Resource Center, the Durham Business and Professional Chain, and the future North Carolina Freedmen's Trade Association. Your partnership and shared vision have been instrumental in bringing this resolution to fruition. As we celebrate this milestone together, we also see it as a foundational, a foundation for meaningful collaboration in the year ahead. SEBAC is dedicated to fostering economic empowerment for historically underutilized businesses through innovative development initiatives. We are eager to work with Durham County and our dedicated community allies to ensure these initiatives receive the fiscal support and collaborative engagement needed to empower historically underutilized businesses to equitably participate in meeting the county's capital improvement and procurement needs. Together, let us continue building a future rooted in shared prosperity. We look forward to earning your trust and partnership as we embark on this journey. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Thank you so much for bringing this resolution to our board and for your service to the Durham community and abroad. Are there any comments from the rest of the commissioners? Being done, we appreciate, oh, Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, I just wanted to thank you so much for your comments and for also bringing this to us. I don't believe that we've ever had this proclamation before.
Yes.
This is the first time. Um, and I learned a lot from reading it, for instance, that New Bern was the first place where this was celebrated in eighteen sixty-five. So, um, it's really important to educate the community and to lift this up. So, thank you so much.
Yes, I appreciate it. Durham has a rich history, so I'm honored to be one to, uh, re-bring it back to the floor. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you again. That brings us to our minutes for approval. We have the board is requested to approve the November twenty-fifth regular session and November second work session. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of those.
I mean, Wendy, we weren't, we weren't here.
I guess I can move the November twenty-fifth since you and I are the only one people here. So I'll, I'll move, uh, we can do them separately if people feel comfortable. I don't, that's okay. All right, for both of, uh, November twenty-fifth and, uh, December second, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Vice Chair Dr. Lee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. Uh, we have about fifteen items. I would suggest individuals, they've been posted on our agenda, and they're also printed out, uh, to take some time to look through those, um, and read about them. Um, these are items that were necessarily presented at our work session, but have been discussed among staff and have been working on. So, if, are there any items anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just have a question about item twenty-four dash zero seven zero one. I don't need to pull it, I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just, um, I see some of the staff, I see the sheriff's here and some of his staff. Um, I was wondering about the history. I know in the past, we have funded, um, the body cameras. It seems like this is a new, um, it's a new type of camera. And so one, one, I was just wondering, how much has, have we invested previously? And whether those cameras are still going to be utilized? I know this will fund two hundred and forty-three body worn and a hundred and ninety-three in vehicles over a five-year period with a total cost of three point six million dollars, if I'm correct. If I'm not, please correct me. But, um, so I'm just trying to understand how this relates to what we have funded in the past, is my first question related to this.
So, good evening. I'm Vincent Redder. I'm Director of Technology and Emergency Communications for the Sheriff's Office. And this, the, the, the initial set that we received have gone end of life. They are no longer, uh, they still work, but with all the upgrades that Motorola has done to their databases and how they operate, and we won't be able to get parts for them anymore. So they won't be, uh, there's just nothing that we can do with them after January first.
Okay, and will this, um, this plan over five years, will this cover the entire need? And then, like, what happens after five years? Do we start over again, or how, how long do these last?
So the good thing about this particular program is it's, it's a five-year setup, but after three years Motorola will come in, replace all of our cameras at no extra charge, which now keeps us in the rotation cycle of four years, which is, um, industry standard for any type of technology. The new cameras also give us, uh, more capabilities with license plate readers. It, the, one of the big things is that we are seeing now is we need to make sure we know where our deputies are. So we have GPS built in, so it is a much more robust system. And, uh, it will also give us the ability to do, um, live view. So if our deputies get into some sort of anything, we can watch it live and know what's going on, and that will help the sheriff and his executive staff kind of position the rest of the deputies to make sure that everyone stays safe.
Okay, great. Um, and does this number, is this cover the need? The, um, the two hundred and forty-three body and one hundred and ninety-three in cars?
It does, for the moment. Um, but as we need, again, to, to continue to staff up in the detention center and with our, um, on-the-road deputies, our L E Os, as they, as that number grows at our three-year point, it's a possibility that we would have to come back and look to, uh, add more cameras.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Um, and the second part of my question, I was just wondering, what, do you all have developed policies about the, you know, who monitors? And then who has access to the body camera information? And just how, how that work, that part works?
Good evening, Commissioner. Sheriff Burkett, yes, we do have established policies, and our administrators, um, two members of my command staff and our investigators monitor any body camera that, um, needs further investigation. Any, any body camera footage that needs further investigation.
Okay, and if, for, how does it work for public access to that? Is that, I don't know, I'm just asking, how does that process work?
Well, there's a new law that passed last year, so we follow the, the law. Uh, and if anyone from the public wishes to view the camera footage, uh, it, it requires a court order from a judge.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Valentine?
If I could just piggyback, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you, uh, you stated that the service life uh, for these cameras invest is, is four years. Is that right?
So the, the service life for all technology best practices is four years. Now, we can run these cameras longer, but once Motorola decides, all right, it's time for us to upgrade, uh, add new features or whatever, after that four-year period, they do go end of life. So it, it's, again, it, it depends on what Motorola does. If they upgrade, add new features, we could possibly use them longer, but most of the time, they follow that industry standard policy.
So should we have any concerns with technology moving so fast? With the technology that we're, we're getting here? Should we have any concerns about that?
No, because this program is set up for that. It's a five-year program, and that, and with them, uh, replacing our cameras in three years, that's going to make sure we stay in that curve of, um, of movement.
Well, let me just, uh, and thank you so much. Uh, let me just end by saying that, uh, I think that this resource is one that, uh, shows a level of accountability to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Any other questions or any other items that any commissioners have?
Yeah, I have a question, and it's not about, we don't have to pull an item, but I just want to make sure I'm clear about, um, and maybe County Manager Hager can ans, um, this question, answer this question for me, about debt service fund, fund balance, transfer to pay-go fund? Like, what does that exactly mean?
And, let's see, which, okay, for this.
It was in two four dash zero seven nine five.
Okay, so, uh, the county has, um, different funds, including the general fund, the debt service fund. Pay-as-you-go is a type of fund for basically projects that the county is funding, um, through self-pay. So, um, we have a capital finance model, and within that model, it is funded from property taxes, sales taxes, and some other revenue sources. It's, it was established back in the eighties, and it's how we liquidate our debt. Well, part of it has an apportion amount that goes to pay-go projects, pay-as-you-go projects. And those are projects that, um, are most often county, um, projects that, uh, we don't want to, um, finance. Or they're projects that, um, if we are, are looking at a type of financing, um, we, we typically, uh, don't, you don't typically see uh, certain projects like camera projects or other types of projects like that, that are smaller, uh, lower in cost. Sometimes we may, um, do financing, bank financing for those kinds of projects. But when we can, we pay cash. And, um, when we are trying to be strategic, um, we will see, well, where do we have available balances in another fund? Um, as long as it doesn't, um, disrupt our overall portfolio, because we have to manage towards a certain number as far as, uh, fund reserves. So, we have dollars in our debt service fund balance that can support uh, a transfer to support that pay-as-you-go project.
Thank you. I figured that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure that's what it was.
Okay, all right, and we can give additional information on that? And thanks for reminding us, we have to spell out those acronyms as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Any other items? Okay, I will then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. And that brings us to the boards and commissions, uh, I believe, which I still have to turn in mind to Attorney Williams, since if everyone can. I apologize. This agenda packet is so large. We have other business, so we have a little bit of time before we get to boards and commissions. The ARPA Budget Reconciliation and Approval of ARPA Grant Ordinance, Amendment Number Twenty-five A R P A zero zero one. Um, and we have Manager Hager, is you are leading this one?
I am leading this item. We could have put it on consent, because we've been talking about it for some time, but it, this is a celebratory moment in which we, um, come to the place that aligns with the U S Treasury guidelines. It, we needed to make sure all contracts related to ARPA, um, the American Rescue Plan Act funds were encumbered by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We started this journey, um, about two and a half years ago, and almost every other meeting, we've given an update or we've, um, shared about strategy. Um, the board adopted a plan for ARPA, um, fund use in May of twenty twenty-two, and we have, um, worked very closely to execute that plan. We, um, should feel real proud about the strategic investments that have been done. Um, from funding to support affordable housing, um, to funding for childcare services. The list goes on and on. We have, um, almost fifty projects, and many of which are with community partners, uh, many of our nonprofit partners. So, we are grateful for the partners that are helping us, um, with funds, uh, being implemented and investments, many of which that will, um, serve this community for decades to come. So, um, I, I just wanted to also acknowledge the staff that have been closely involved with this process. Our grants administrator, John Kiefer, um, Ella Hargrove, our management analyst, John Keenan, our compliance manager, Chris Lee Ryder, interim chief financial officer, John Wood, who's also in our compliance area, and of course, our budget team, who, um, help and on various, um, adjustments, Keith Lane, David Atis, and many others. So when you start calling out names, um, you, you get in trouble. But I will say, when we started on this journey, one of the things that we said was that we wanted to make sure we were, um, extra vigilant, and that's why, uh, many of us have been involved. I'm sure you've seen stories where some communities may not have, um, wrapped their arms around it as, as tightly, and, and, and it's caused some challenge. And so, uh, we still have a tight walk through, um, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So this will not be the last, um, time you hear about this. So we will, um, continue to update the board on activities and projects. Um, and again, this, um, this action will realign dollars into the various functions where the, the projects, um, have landed. So we started on, um, we may, when we developed our plan, for instance, we may have thought that the activity would have occurred in public safety, but it was, um, actually in another category. So this realigns those, um, actions. Um, there are also some contract amendments that are, um, captured that were discussed at the November work session. And after this particular item, there are two capital project amendments that are also referenced that we will also need board action on. So, I just wanted to, um, thank the board for their support. And again, this is not the last conversation. There will be plenty others. But also thank the many team partners, um, who've been a part of this journey. So, um, that's all of my remarks.
Thank you, Manager Hager. And can you, since this is for our new board members, the first time we're officially discussing ARPA, do a brief overview of how much total money we have given out, how much money is.
And if we, um, look at, uh, some of the, and I, we, we had in total sixty-two point five million dollars. Some large buckets that we've given dollars to included, um, there's thirteen point one million dollars for a water sewer investment for Slater Road. Um, we allocated thirteen point five million in partnership with the City of Durham um, to support five housing developments that would focus on, um, affordable housing. Um, those, those investments have a thirty-year commitment at least to maintain, to be maintained as affordable housing. Um, there are many others, such as almost two point four million dollars allocated for food security. Um, and during the, uh, during the COVID, um, initial, um, a challenge, uh, we, we, we saw that we needed to invest quite a bit in that area. There's also dollars for, um, child services. There's also dollars for um, child services, almost two point four million dollars. And in the list, there are many other categories. So from food security, housing security, um, supporting families with childcare services and many other areas.
Thank you, Manager Hager. I just wanna commend your hard work and your entire team who's been working on this ARPA money. Uh, because even though it's like a lot of money and we're very good at spending money, um, but the amount of detail that went into selecting the areas and the projects that the money went into and following the rules and regulations and requirements that were, that came with this ARPA funding, that meticulous level of work um, was really inspiring to see and like coming to present to us and giving that transparency with the board throughout the process. So thank you to you and your amazing team.
Two, two notes. There are two great um, overviews of all funding in the documents. Uh, one is focused on our community grants and then there's another that is focused on the overall program. And again, we will be back for additional updates and um, thank you for, for the time.
Bring it to the board. Uh, from this side, any questions? Commissioner Jacobs?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what you just said. Um, this is a incredible accomplishment and thank you Ella and John for all of your work. I mean, just doing a top job. Um, if you look at in our agenda materials, and I hope this will be on the website,
Yes.
the chart of every single organization that has been funded as well as the um, I guess, the, the document that gives like a one-pager on every organization that was funded is, is just wonderful for our community to be able to look at that and to understand where the money is going. And so I, I really appreciate um, you know, just all of the work that you've done. And um, I'm glad this goes till twenty twenty-six because um, we know they'll, it'll keep impacting and um, but it also highlights how many, you know, it's gonna be really hard to not have this money in our community as well. So um, we can all enjoy this uh, for the next two years.
There are, do you wanna go into the two additional items that are related to this?
Okay, yes. The other two items are related to a uh, project that I mentioned earlier. One is uh, a budget amendment that will reduce the allocation from the enterprise fund um, and will increase the amount from ARPA to support that project. The overall project is over twenty-two million dollars. And from a strategy perspective, and this is an effort we will continue throughout the end of project management, is that if by chance a contract needs to end, there are certain areas that we shared from a priority perspective and risk factor that we recommended. One was um, child um, services and subsidies to support families. The other was looking at um, food security um, issues. And um, so those are areas. And the third was also uh, the, the water sewer project because it's such a large one. And so the board uh, will hear updates and if by chance a contract ends because uh, an entity can't perform the work or there's concern about the project quality, we will make recommendations to the board to do some realignment. So there's lots and lots of eyes on it because on the back end, we're, we're focused on the back end when the compliance auditors come. And so we have the audits internally, um, and reviews. Mr. Keenan, um, in the back, he is one of our compliance auditors. Um, John Kiefer also, who is a former federal um, compliance auditor and um, is, is also a hawk on those things as well. Um, and then we have our external auditors as well as our internal auditors. And these, these funds get audited a lot. And so, but on top of all of that, treasury will come at some point. That may be four years from now, we are not sure. But we've, we've tried to mitigate our risks to make sure we have controls in place and extra sets of eyes. And so uh, again, if things do arise, or um, my saying, when in doubt, leave ARPA out. If it's a gray area, we'll come back and say, board, we may need to shift this to something different. Because on the back end, we don't want the feds to come back and say, okay, this should have maybe not happened that way. So uh, we take, we, we don't play in the gray in this. Um, and so it's to protect the board, but it sometimes makes folks a little frustrated with us, but that's okay. Um, so that's the um, twenty-four oh seven nine three. And then the other item is related to, is a capital project, um, a lot, realignment. We at one point, were going to allocate funds to support a transition house. And um, based on the timing of that project, we determined that we would not use ARPA dollars and reduce the dollars for that. Um, and that was a timing issue because we were concerned that the project completion would not happen by the um, timeframe of uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Because it was gray, we shifted. And because we were, we're still trying to determine how we'll move forward in that space. So that realignment will um, remove three hundred and seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars of ARPA funding from that project, but it is replaced with debt service fund balance, which we have funds to support. And so those ex- um, are the explanations for those two items.
Are there questions any commissioners has? Hearing none. Okay, then we can go through and a move to approve each of these individually. Um, we will start with, I'll entertain a motion for twenty-four dash zero seven four two.
I'd like to make a motion that we move item twenty-four zero seven four two, ARPA Budget Reconciliation and Approval of ARPA Grant Ordinance Amendment Number Twenty-five Alpha Romeo Papa Alpha zero zero one. Moving fund, moving funding, excuse me, between functional areas to align with final project authorizations and approved contract amendments to support final project authorizations.
I second. A move by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Then we have twenty-four dash zero seven nine three. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I move approval of item number, the agenda item number twenty-four dash zero seven nine three.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. Um, now twenty-four dash zero seven nine five. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I make a motion that we approve item two-four dash zero seven nine five. Approval of capital project amendment number two-five C P eight zero two eight.
Thank you.
Uh, so moved and, and including the budget ordinance amendment as well.
It needs a second, not a move.
Yeah, so move by Commissioner Burton, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Now that brings us to our board and commission appointment. Did everyone pass along their ballot? Over to Attorney Williamson.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, I just wanna make one comment related to what Manager Hager was saying about in the future, maybe possible realignment of dollars. I see John walking out. Um, at our last DSS board meeting, I was very shocked to see that for food security right now, we have over five hundred people waiting for meals on wheels. This is the highest number that I've seen since serving on the DSS board for twelve years. We've, it was like, over, it was like five hundred and twenty-four people. I don't remember the amount exactly. And the other item that was really shocking was we now have a very large waiting list for childcare subsidy. Over, I think it was two hundred and sixty-five children waiting for childcare. Um, and this is directly related to, we've lost a lot of providers um, in the community since COVID. And also losing the uh, federal funding that had helped to um, supplement the um, cost for childcare to the childcare providers to supplement salaries. I just wanna highlight that and maybe at some point, we can have the DSS director come and report to us. Um, because um, these are some very critical needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. I'm sure uh, we will discuss that and talk to Manager Hager and then Vice Chair Dr. Lee and I will talk about that in agenda prep for a future work session. Attorney Williamson, you ready? Pass it to you.
Okay, so we have um, several vacant positions here. The first one is a vacant position, position, um, the county resident alternate position with the Board of Adjustments. And the board has um, elected William Vatavuk um, to that position. We have one vacant position with um, the Dangerous Dog Appeal Board, and this is one Durham County employee position. And the board has selected Thomas Veralt for that position. We have two vacant positions, which are two at-large positions with the Durham County Women's Commission. And the board has selected Latasha Bestagati and Hope Venetta for those two positions. And we have three vacant positions for the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission, one at-large, one-car Oak Grove Township position and one Triangle Towns- Township position. And the board has selected Eric Faust, Courtney McGuire, and Ramsey Ritchie for those positions.
Thank you, Attorney Williamson. Congratulations to all the residents who are selected to serve. Um, we appreciate you stepping up to serve Durham County. Individuals, continue to apply because we have lots of boards and commissions that we need support on. So we look forward to reviewing the applications and we vote on them at the last regular session of every month. Thank you all so much. I will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
I second.
I had a discussion real quick, the.
No items were pulled from consent.
Yeah, but the, our appointments.
That is, that was on consent agenda.
That was on, okay, alright.
Yeah, I believe that was right, yeah.
Okay.
It was item number, uh, twenty-four dash zero seven nine zero.
Alright, I didn't see it, sorry about that.
Okay, move by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. See you in the new year.